Oh, I'm not able to hear the room, sorry.
Never mind, no. Sorry about- Everything she can, but we can't hear her.
Turn it up.
Everett needs to talk out.
Let's try again.
Sorry about that.
Alright, I think, I think we're to the good now. Are, are we recording? You are, okay. Very good, I'll go ahead and start. Very good. Um, uh, welcome everybody tonight to, um, the City of Tombwater's Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June tenth, twenty twenty-five. It's just after seven and we have a quorum, so, uh, our meeting is called to order. I'll do our roll call like usual, um, Commissioner Daniel. Great, Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Great, Commissioner Kurt Patrick.
Here.
Commissioner Kotek is excused, but we think she's gonna be joining us. Commissioner Nelson, here. Great, Vice Chair Stat.
Here.
Great, and me, Commissioner Robbins. Great, we do have a quorum. Um, let's see, our, uh, one change to our agenda is that we're gonna move, uh, number six, Brad's general report, to after our item eight, uh, in hopes that he'll be here from the city council meeting to join us by about that point. So, um, hopefully that's okay with everybody. Alrighty, any other changes that anybody wants to suggest? Okay, that's good then. Um, let's go to item number four, approval of our minutes from May thirteenth. Questions, revisions, questions? They moved to approve? Great. Um, that was, uh, moved by Commissioner Nelson, is there a second?
All second.
Commissioner Edwards, seconding. Uh, any discussion? Alright. Um, all in favor of approving our minutes from our May thirteenth meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, minutes are approved, thanks everybody. Um, any commissioners' reports, anything you've been out doing, seeing, observing, wanna tell us about?
I just have one comment, I, um, was able to, uh, be invited to a Habitat for Humanity webinar and in there saw the work that they've been doing around, and I sent an email to Erica and to Brad about it, around climate resilient homes and resilient homes and new construction strategies. And I, I didn't see, as I said, I didn't see the resilience type language in the plan, but what I did see is language around, um, being willing to revise the code and I, I forget now exactly what it says, but something around being able to look at new building strategies and new building codes and new materials and new ways to do it. So I, I thought that was cool to have that, see that within the plan.
Yeah, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, innovative, innovative strategies, innovative designs. And I will, uh, take any comments and address that. Um, I don't know if that's a time for me to address now, any kind of comment on the housing.
Let's wait till we are, that we dig into the-
Yes. Presentation.
But, good, I'm glad you were able to do that, Habitat for Humanity.
Interesting.
Anybody else? Alright. Um, let's go to public comments. Do we, do we have, would you like to address the planning commission? Okay, well, thanks for, thanks for being here. Yeah. Do, do we have anybody online or did you hear from anybody in the mean, in the meanwhile?
Not that I'm aware of, but Brad may have things to share.
Focus on the Zoom.
Both are careful. Don't you just press stop share at the top? Just that's great.
Okay. Um, well, great, we're especially glad we have our in-person sits in here, so great. Um, let's go on to item number eight then, our twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan periodic update for the housing column is a kind of a continuation and really digging into our, from our discussion last time. So, Anna, is that you leading or?
I'm leading the discussion, I'm gonna wait till we get the PowerPoint pulled up.
Yeah.
Awesome.
We confirm, um, Commissioner Edwards, can you see the PowerPoint? Commissioner Edwards, do you see our PowerPoint? Are they still through the agenda?
I'm still seeing the agenda. Sorry, I was unmuted, I was talking, yeah.
I know, sometimes you have to, I have to close and reshare and-
Perfect.
Perfect.
Good deal.
Amazing, well, good evening everyone, um, tonight I'm gonna be talking about the housing element, we have completed the draft part one and two, so we have completed both policies and, um, action items, and then we also have the part two technical. Um, tonight, uh, the intent of the presentation, we're gonna out, uh, talk about the outline and the format of the housing element, uh, we're gonna talk about the goal of policies and draft implementation actions, um, I'll receive feedback on those and then we can have open discussions on the plan, the element, um, does it fit Tombwater, did we capture all the public input that we've received and all of your comments throughout this process? And then we'll talk about next steps. Oopsies. Okay. Who are we planning for? Um, the Growth Management Act requires Tombwater to plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments of the population, House Bill twelve-twenty amended the GMA, um, to require us to plan for not just housing, but all economic, economic segments, so all populations', um, income levels. Uh, the city has been prioritizing housing and affordable housing, not only through the comprehensive plan, but through our housing action plan, um, being part of the regional housing council, and then also adopting our tenant landlord regulations, and, um, we are now, uh, part of the Black Homes Initiative, um, to work collectively, not just countywide, but regionally, huge a sound area. And, uh, the survey, we did put a survey back in twenty twenty-three at the beginning, um, of this process. And out of eight hundred and fifty-five responses, four hundred and twenty-three of those, or forty-nine percent of respondents stated Tombwater should pursue and support the development of affordable housing. Um, and as of April first, twenty twenty-five, the area median income for a two-person household in Tombwater, or not just Tombwater, but in Thurston County, was ninety-three thousand dollars, and a four-person household was, oh, a hundred and sixteen thousand. So, um, the more people in a household, the more money you'll need to, uh, live comfortably or to afford, um, that thirty percent is that magic number for affordability, thirty percent of your income should be spent on housing to-
Quick question on that. Um, do we have a breakdown, um, from the census or, or whatever about, um, um, median or modal size of households, single households, two-person households, three, four, and larger? Do we have that, I mean, in Tombwater?
Yeah.
Is it largely a community of families four and above, or are we largely a, a community of single households, single-person households?
That is a great question, um, I don't think we go into that much depth as far as how many of each type of household, but I do know the average household size is just over two. Yeah, so the average household size. Um, I think there is a trend where household sizes are gradually getting smaller, um, but I can definitely follow up and look, our part two, the technical portion of the housing element, really has a lot of data, a lot of tables, I wish I could memorize all the data, but I can definitely follow up. Is that something that maybe we should consider or?
I'm, I'm just curious about that on account of, that maybe helps inform the kinds or sizes of housing needed, especially if there's a trend line, um, you know, into the future of, of, um, that, that size of household staying around two or even dwindling, we're gonna need more, you know, say somewhat smaller homes, apartments, whatever, um, because it'll be more single and couples rather than larger, larger, um-
Yeah. I know we talk about middle housing and then we also, part of the middle housing, we have our life cycle stages, so like life cycles, um, so it, you know, your recent high school graduates, college students, um, singles and then couples, families, and then we go into like seniors and, um, we do address that, kind of, the housing and the cycles of housing, um, that's great feedback, I'll go through the technical element and see how much we've broken down, um, AMI, household size, and then types of housing and maybe the size of housing.
And just to target where we need some emphasis.
Yeah, that's great, that's great.
That's my question about this too, so it's two-person household and then the four-person household, to me that's just somebody, four-person household, two kids, a little older, having a little bit better income as the age where the two-person could be, probably the younger crowd that's still working their way up, is that what that is telling us in that?
We have, so in our technical part two element, uh, we talk about the less people there are in a household, the less money you need, um-
That's just about how much money's needed.
Well, that's the area median income, so this is, um, AMI, so it's, it's a measure of midpoint of income for a specific geographic region.
I'm just, it, I haven't seen it broken out like this, where it's the four-person versus the two-person, I usually just see the two-person, uh, typically, and looking at things like this, so I just thought it was interesting to see that, I think it's a nice thing.
Yeah.
To me it's painting a picture and I, the picture I'm seeing is slightly older or with two kids now, but they have a slightly higher median income.
Yeah, a lot of, you know, maybe seniors or, uh, or, uh, you know, uh, of two people whose children have moved on, or it may, it may be even group housing
Yep.
Of some kind.
For that two-person.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, you know, whatever.
Yeah, that was, my intent was just to give an example of like different households, combined incomes, and like when we talk about AMI, it's not, it's not just like a set number, it really depends on the household size.
Right.
Yeah, so I wanted to give a little more, um, background information or just share more information about, uh, what the average is currently.
Yeah, it tells the kind of life cycle story of-
Right, right.
Maybe having an apartment, then having a townhouse, then having a house, then having, um, something else, then transitioning back down into a smaller unit, um, to me that's kind of telling that story a little bit.
And, you know, we might be seeing, um, you know, into the future, Tombwater is seen as a, a kind of a, um, a good place to move, to retire to, um, and we're really close to the, um, joint base where a lot of ex-military, um, you know, might, and there's probably a little better price point for housing than say, um, Pierce County, Tacoma.
Right now, you don't get a lot of those, transitioning out.
Yeah, so you, you know, you have that kind of demographic where, uh, Tombwater looks pretty welcoming.
Yeah, later on in the presentation, we kind of break down, um, we do have data, demographic data, some, uh, statistics about age, um, the population, uh, just the residents of Tombwater, uh, we break it down by ethnicity and stuff like that too, and this, it does, you know, children under eighteen, eighteen plus, you know, we do have some of that data.
Good, I mean, in the, if we're gonna have a discussion about who we're planning for, we need to know about who, you know, who are those folks?
Yeah. Okay. More about them. More of a story of Tombwater. Okay.
Elizabeth, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Is it that you didn't see that in the, within the context of the element, or you wanna see more of that in the context of the element?
Um, I might have missed it, um, in that kind of detail, but, you know, upfront in-
A lot of detail.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Um, um, but, you know, upfront to just kind of characterize, you know, more, paint, paint a little picture of, you know, what, what are the kinds of, you know, uh, demographics that Tombwater is presently, but also that trend line that we think isn't going to be into the future.
Almost more like a summary of all that data, but-
Yeah.
Personalized?
Or, or, you know, not just like some data dump, you know, a description. Yeah.
When someone goes online and views best places to live in the USA and Tombwater pops up and there's a brief little blurb on, this is what it is, instead of, here's all these data points and all this reading, good luck.
The AMI for the region is this.
There's this nice little story.
A lot of people are not gonna track them.
Yeah.
What does it mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. And maybe that helps inform even, you know, over into other, other elements of the comp plan, the economic development, um, element, you know, who's attracted to this area, all that kind of stuff, but so here though, you know, who are the kind of people that we, and families and, and other groupings that are here and, and we expect to be here?
Great feedback, thank you. Um, so moving on, household income categories in Tombwater, um, this is just showing what the, the percent of area median income is, and then we kind of give a dollar amount, and then this is based on a family of four, so, um, we have that, and then we wanted to kind of paint a picture on what the typical, um, jobs for these income categories might be. When we, when we first met, I wanted to help paint a picture of, of what affordable means, and it's like, people would be surprised to say, like, see that low income is considered fifty-eight thousand to ninety-three thousand a year for a salary for a family of four. So it just puts into perspective maybe the perception of affordable housing and housing and why it's important, and then explaining what the, what kind of jobs are, yeah, what the community, what the workers are making and the kind of the housing that would be associated, or the needs for those incomes, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Oh, um, Commissioner Edwards has her hand up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um, and I, we probably don't have this up pan, but it might be interesting to see, like, roughly how many of each of those jobs are available in Tombwater, or like what percentage of the jobs fit in Tombwater, fit into each of those categories, just so we can kind of see, like, you know, thirty percent of the jobs that are available in Tombwater fit into like, you know, the moderate income or whatever, you know, that would kind of just be interesting for me to see.
Yeah, definitely, I think, uh, the city is really anticipating, um, someone to help with the economic development plan, uh, we, we have hired a consultant, but we just don't have a staff person right now to update that element, but that would be something that we would talk about, um, in that plan specifically, I remember seeing, um, some, some data provided by our consultant, um, so yeah, yeah, that, it, it's something we are looking forward to, we're still trying to hire a person to fill that position and we're gonna work on the economic development plan.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of related to Commissioner Edwards' question, I'm wondering too about, um, of the kinds of jobs that we have in Tombwater, okay, let me back up and just say that, um, kind of affordability of housing is not just the structure itself.
Right.
It, it's gonna be, how far do I have to drive to get to my job, cost to that, uh, associated with, um, with that, um, that time away from family, all that kind of stuff. So, you know, proximity to job, are the jobs here next to the housing, close to the housing, are they good jobs, are they solid jobs, you know, those kinds of things would be good to help tell that part of the story too. Um, there's probably other things in that, in that affordability calculation, if you will. In other words, we might, we might have a, you know, some housing and people have good jobs, but man, they, they hardly ever get to spend any time here in Tombwater because they have to commute to, but, you know, Pierce and King County.
Right, yeah, that's a good point.
Well, the, the other piece of it, and I don't know how deep really we need to dig into this, but to just always remember that young families with children and two parents, what we're talking about, four-person, four-person, probably have significant childcare costs. Washington now has the highest childcare cost in the nation, and it far exceeds the cop, university tuition for a year.
Yep.
So, um, of anything, more than transportation, childcare cost is the, one of the biggest expenses and exceeds the thirty percent for housing.
That's why you see that two-point whatever number, not the three-point whatever number, because having a second child really pushes you into that-
Right.
-hole. I know that personally.
Yeah, most of us do at one point.
Exactly, at one point.
Yeah.
So even that, that AMI for a family of four, that is interesting once you overlay that.
Once you take away that childcare, you're, a lot less.
Yeah, I was in New Mexico, uh, two sessions ago, that's why I was in here, and it was interesting, they're forty-ninth and fiftieth in the state for, um, their schools, but they also have tremendous amount of money that they're putting into that right now, and they have free childcare, and they have multiple other fantastic programs, but it's because they are forty-ninth and fiftieth in the state for, um, schooling, so they are putting a lot of money towards that right now and trying to help families, um, which is very interesting to me, because we're on the other end of this spectrum, um, and we do cost so much, so.
Yeah, I do believe historically childcare centers, it, it was a land use and a zoning, um, it depends on the zoning and the land use and what's allowed, and I do think from a state level, there might be discussions, um, I don't know the bill off the top of my head and I don't quite recall the status of it, if it was passed or if it's this coming legislative session, but it is addressing childcare and having it closer proximity to jobs, um-
We spoke about that in an element at some point in time.
Right, right, I-
Don't remember exactly which one, but we discussed how, uh, if we can incentivize, uh, when we're building all these different units and areas, if we can incentivize that or push for that.
That is something I might need to check, I know we've talked about work housing, like workforce housing, so, uh, trying to attract companies, like, I know some cities, some companies have provided housing for their employees, but then also maybe providing childcare, um, we could maybe look at it from the mixed-use development, um, and then we might have talked about, um, we might have brought it up with the airport overlay and like being close to the airport.
Except for from that, but there, there was, I mean, it's been a while-
It's been, yes.
Spoken about it, but it-
Twenty twenty-three.
Around, um, we framed it and if we're having these developments, we're having businesses come in, um, if we could incentivize or do something as a city to either require or have childcare onsite available or nearby, um, because that is one of the big things.
Yeah.
And I don't, I think it was just something we brought up and nothing may have happened with it.
So what I'm hearing is maybe looking at the impacts of where people are working or commuting to work versus where they're living, and then also, um, kind of the resources around their work, um, and other associated costs, the cost of living and its effect with housing.
Because I drive five minutes, four minutes or five minutes to my childcare, and that played a huge part in why I chose there, even though it is the most expensive, um, but the other one is ten minutes, but then it's in the opposite direction of my works, and now it's twenty minutes. So that played a huge role in where we chose to go for childcare, so if you have more options, and it's not even the city of Tombwater, technically, Olympia.
Yeah, I know the, per the GMA, it's plan for and accommodate housing, um, but getting a better idea of what some of the factors are for housing affordability, um, could really help us make, uh, policy changes down the road, um, so yeah, that's great, that's great input, um, I know this isn't, there's a lot of factors that go into housing affordability, some that aren't within our control as a jurisdiction, but yeah, that, that is good, good feedback. Okay.
Moving on, good.
So this is breaking down, um, household income categories in Tombwater, uh, based on twenty twenty-one data, um, and it shows how the various area median income groups in Tombwater are broken down by percentage of households, um, so our total population, uh, twenty-one percent of households in Tombwater fall into the extremely low income or very low income categories, and fifty-two percent are above the median income. Which is greater than a hundred percent AMI. So we have all households together and then we separated it out by renter and owner, um, I do think it's interesting to see that six percent of households or house owners, um, household owners are extremely low income or less than or equal to thirty percent AMI, um, it makes you, it paints a picture of how many people are house poor. Um, so-
It may also include, I don't know if the number's big enough, but our trailer homes, modular home parks, um, and then just kind of really old housing stock that, you know, it's, uh, has a lower value to it.
Thirty years too, might play a part in that.
And that might play part, part of it too, yeah, yeah. I, I think all of this is just a really complex, um, picture, and I appreciate the efforts you've gone to to show part of that complexity.
So this is a breakdown of cost burden, which ties into AMI, so those spending more than thirty percent, uh, the green is, uh, less than or equal to thirty percent, red is, uh, above thirty percent to, um, less than or equal to fifty percent, and then the blue there is above fifty percent, um, and then there is a tiny, tiny dark green represented on the screen, which is cost burden, not available, um. So renters definitely are more cost burdened, the city of Tombwater. Now, this is some fun data, this is the affordability index. Uh, housing affordability indexes are for both housing buyers and renters, and it's another way to understand the scope of the affordability issue. When the index is one hundred, there is a balance between the family's ability to pay, um, the higher index indicates the housing is more affordable. So we have blue- Um, the higher index indicates the housing is more affordable. So we have, blue is Yelm. This is kind of a, um, countywide statistics. The purple there is Olympia, orange is Lacey, and what you can't see clearly or that well is the dark blue, which is Tumwater. Tumwater is pretty much, oh, following the trend for Lacey. Um, so again, any number above one hundred is where it's more affordable for home buyers. So statistically and grad- and over time, it's getting less and less affordable for home buyers. And then this is affordability index for renters. The dark blue, uh, we're about in the middle there. Um, interesting trends in Yelm during twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. But again, it's still gradually getting more and more unaffordable. We did, uh, see a little rise in affordability, um, quarter three of twenty twenty-two. So it is getting better, um, from our least affordable period, which was in twenty twenty-one.
And this is our most current data.
This goes to twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, this is based on the Runstad Center for Real Estate Research. It's.
For a quarter to go.
Right. Okay. Then we're going to talk about the need for housing. So House Bill twelve twenty allowed Thurston County, the Thurston County jurisdictions to determine the housing need plans regionally as part of the twenty twenty-five comprehensive plan update. What this means is the state allocated X amount of housing units needed for Thurston County. All the jurisdictions within Thurston County, including the county, um, met and they came up with a collaborative process, um, to determine the amount of housing units per jurisdiction. Uh, we partnered with Thurston Regional Planning, uh, Council and based on that process, Tumwater will need to add nine thousand one hundred and ninety-two net new housing units between twenty twenty-two and twenty forty-five, uh, and this includes its urban growth area.
Roughly how many people is that expected to, um, house that nine thousand number? That additional nine thousand?
There are like twenty-one thousand or something.
Yeah, it, there is an, there is methodology, um, that is in our housing needs allocation. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I do think.
Two-point something.
I was going to say, I think it's based off the two-point something.
Five, two-point-three something, I can't remember.
Yeah.
That's the case, that's roughly.
It's been written down on paper.
Twenty-two, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Terry. Yes, we, we have that information.
In that seven hundred page document.
Yes.
Yeah.
We are anticipating nearly a doubling of our population, so yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so it, we do have, uh, the housing units we currently have in twenty twenty, um, and then we have the projected needs over the future. So we're going from a total of twelve thousand to twenty-one thousand, yeah, roughly. And then this is breaking down that nine thousand plus into what, how, the affordability of it. So the housing allocation, and then we break it down by income group. So, um, the, the biggest need here that we see is going to be our zero to thirty percent, um, AMI, closely following the thirty to fifty percent AMI as well, but now we also need to plan for and accommodate for permanent supportive housing. Um, over a hundred and twenty percent AMI is not represented. Here we go. And then the anticipated future housing needs. So using that data, we know we need this number of units for this income group, and then we have identified what kind of housing, um, would be within, that they would need or that they could potentially afford. So, um, we broke it down by rental, rental or homeownership, and then we have market rate rents and
But here on this chart, we don't put the permanent supportive housing.
No, correct. We don't have that represented. We know that that type of housing is going to be public funded, um, service, social services provided. Uh, that's going to be your emergence, emergency housing, um, was probably housing provided by like the church, uh, the community, um, emergency. Sorry, I was just going off the top of my head, but, um, this is more like what kind of housing they could afford. So that kind of income group is most likely going to need assistance and they're going to have the, the public assistant housing.
Right. Uh, I'm just trying to, you know, kind of keep the two charts kind of, uh, telling the same story.
Yeah, and that is a good, that is a good, that's a good point, that if we're going to break it down even further, we could probably talk about what zero to thirty.
And that.
And that.
So yeah, the, the bottom, the, it's the two combined, so we just don't break it out.
It's just, yeah.
Because that's.
Well, it's just this one, the zero to thirty is just this one.
But then plus that is that number.
Um, well, actually, I don't know that that's included.
So what we're not representing is the permanent supportive housing.
It's, it's in the number.
It's included in the sum of the, uh, I see now.
So you have seventeen twenty-four and then you have, uh, five thirteen and twelve, uh, eleven, which equals the seventeen twenty-four.
Yeah.
So it's, it's there, but it just, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you're looking at it that way, it's like it's the zero to thirty, but it's also the PSH.
Yeah.
The permanent supportive housing.
And I, I, yeah, I think that, thank you for that feedback.
Yeah.
Make it more clear. I didn't know if you're clearing, clearing that up.
Because I was also looking at that like, what's the number difference?
I'm going like, wait, why is that? What is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was trying to make the colors go.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And so part of, uh, addressing housing is taking a look at, okay, we now know we need nine thousand units, but do we have the land and opportunity to build those nine thousand units? So here, we, we've worked with TRPC, we've had a land capacity analysis, um, we have data, kind of breaking down our zoning, our densities, um, vacant lands, lands that could be potentially redeveloped, and we come up with this chart and this information. Uh, the land capacity analysis is a summary of the difference between the allocated housing need and the capacity for the potential number of new dwelling units that could be built. Uh, the land capacity analysis compared the allocated housing need to Tumwater and its urban growth area to its capacity for new housing. A positive number indicates that there is a surplus in Tumwater's capacity for new housing units. So we do have a surplus here. Um, I do want to mention, we have a surplus of thirty-five. Uh, looking at that, that's not a lot of wiggle room for our zero to eighty percent AMI housing units. Um, but we do see more, uh, capacity for our moderate density housing units, so, um, middle housing, single-family residences. This also helps us with updating our, our zoning, our densities as part of the land use element. Uh, some things to consider too, is this doesn't, what might affect this is, uh, if we adopt our HCP, critical areas. Um, I do believe that was reviewed though through the land capacity analysis, uh, taking a look at those, um, mapped lands as well, or those mapped areas.
Erica, I had a thought based on things going around. I had just read that about population, is that it's going to shift as, as the older population grows and as the number of children being born is decreasing.
Mm-hmm.
And I have a horrible feeling that that's really hard to represent in here. So when we think that, that there'll be twenty-some thousand new people, how many of those, if we know that the population is going to be aging, I don't know if there's any way to kind of predict what that means out of that slice of twenty thousand people, which then translates into, um, the kind of housing that will be needed. Um, and I'm suspicioning that there will be a need for increase in, um, care facilities.
Yep.
You know, that, that kind of density, those kinds of structures.
I will say, based on our stakeholder engagement, our public input, um, we did have really good discussions with some core stakeholders, um, the manufactured home park communities, and then we met with the senior South Sound seniors, uh.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Senior Center.
Yeah.
So senior services.
Services.
Yeah.
And we did talk about that, and in Tumwater, it is an issue and it is something we are aware of. We need affordable units, um, more lifecycle housing for the aging population. Um, we talked about, you know, the potential of ADUs and so we could keep people in place. Um, that is a, but it's just, we don't know if that's an affordable option, but that is an option to age in place. It's just whether or not someone can afford. So say we have a, an elder person or a family, um, their kids are grown up with their own families, um, they could build an ADU, live in the ADU and then have the family move in to help care for the property. There's been a lot of discussions and we do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
But I'm glad, it was hard to spare it out of all of the.
Yeah, the data doesn't represent, I think that's more, um, something we want to address through our goals and policies and kind of our vision, um, and then through middle housing and the lifecycle housing. This is just a nitty-gritty, like this is what we got to do, this is who we're planning for, and then the data to support it. That is, that is, yeah. Racially disparate impacts. So part of the comprehensive plan and through House Bill twelve twenty, they amended the GMA to require Tumwater to assess its policies, um, that may have racially disparate impacts, uh, such as segregation, cost burden, displacement, uh, unequal or unfair educational opportunities and health disparities. Um, we have identified our policies that might result in that. We partnered with a consultant and they helped go through our current, uh, policies, our housing action plan, and helped identify where we might unintentionally have disparate impacts. Um, and then through that, we've identified draft implementation policies and regulations to address and to start to begin to undo those racially disparate impacts, um, which may have caused displacement or exclusion in housing. Um, some of those practices could include redlining, the restrictive covenants, um, and a big cause of displacement is rising rents. And then another thing that would cause racially disparate impacts would be, uh, clustered low-income housing, areas of disinvestment. Um, and then through the city, like something like our design standards, um, design review, making affordable housing strict and have to look a certain way could have unintentional, uh, consequences on affordability. So that's something that we've addressed through, um, our goals, policies and actions. I did want to summarize, um, based on what the consultants on the review that they did of our, uh, not just our policies and our plans, but through some data, uh, CHAS data, which is federal data, um, but they've identified, um, that Tumwater is most at risk for economic displacement. And, um, economic displacement looks like rising rent, uh, unaffordable rents, uh, increased property taxes, increased cost of living and other associated, uh, costs associated with life, like we talked about childcare. Um, so this is one that we would, we're going to need to address. We have goals and policies, um, that the consultants have put together to help us address the economic displacement. And then we're going to dive into, uh, the populations at risk in Tumwater. This is some data. Um, thirty percent of our households are cost burden, thirty-nine percent of residents are low, very low, extremely low, and a hundred and ninety-six percent, we've had a hundred and ninety-six percent growth of non-white population from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty-three. So over a period of thirteen years, almost two hundred percent increase. Um, and twenty-two percent of our residents are sixty-plus years old. And then out of our housing stock, we have one thousand two hundred and eighty manufactured housing There was something like highlighting, um, some, how this would play into, uh, displacement, especially when we're looking at economic displacement, so cost burden, uh, increased rentals, that is a risk for displacement. Uh, thirty-nine percent of the residents that are low, very low, extremely low. So it's just trying to paint a picture of what economic displacement is with these percentages.
On, on this slide, I'm curious about, um, future trend. Are all of these, some of them, or which ones are getting worse and which are getting better, or just changing?
Or changing, yes.
That is a great question. Um, working with the consultants, uh, they did use CHAS data, federal data, and their data sets were actually from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen and twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one. Um, what that means for Tumwater staff is we're going to have to take the review, the analysis, um, of our housing action plans, our codes, and, and some of the statistics. The data they have doesn't really necessarily represent current trends because of those two data sets that they use to review and create the displacement, um, report. It's hard for me to translate and that's why we see here this box that I didn't want to mention, or go into detail about, the fifty percent of our vacant rental units are for low or very low income residents. We know and we have data that conflicts with that, but that's because this data was from twenty fifteen to twenty seventeen, when our affordability index was higher. So the displacement analysis is a good start, but because they use federal data and the data sets that were between those time periods, it doesn't really present now, but it is a good starting point for staff, for the city of Tumwater to plan. Um, and the, the, the trend as far as like the type of displacement is relevant, it's just some of these percentages might not be, so.
Uh, I think that, you know, that, this kind of thing could be useful, I mean, if it's that old, so fifteen to seventeen, almost ten years old.
Oh, correction, it was twenty fifteen, twenty nineteen, sorry, and then twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-one.
Okay.
Yeah, but still, it's still.
I mean, it's useful to know where we were then and what conditions prevailed to make the affordability higher and so on, but, um, but you know, where, where's it going?
Right. Well, earlier in the presentation, we saw that the affordability index was still going lower.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, we might have seen a little uptick from twenty twenty-one, but it still is not anywhere close to that one hundred where we want to be.
Right.
So we do know, based on all the data that we've seen and, and talked about, and then the trends, that it, housing is still not affordable, which is, you know. Um, but as far as displacement and addressing specific causes of displacement, or at least identifying what our citizens or the, the community of Tumwater is most at risk of, and trying to also consider that when we're planning for housing, it's a great start. Um, some recommendations, uh, and policies to help reduce displacement, uh, would be a community land trust style program for mobile manufactured home communities. This is something we've also heard. This is something we've also heard echoed from the communities themselves, uh, when meeting that, with them through our stakeholder engagement. A Tom Water program to support private local small-scale ownership of mobile home communities, uh, which would help build on the Tom Waters' mobile home housing stock and it helps to preserve existing affordable stock. Uh, increase staffing capacity to process accessory dwelling units quickly and reduce the cost of, under Tom Waters' control. I would say increased capacity to process any housing, uh, development would help. Um, but, oh, from the engagement that they received, accessory dwelling units was a hot topic. Um, and I would think to elaborate more is maybe innovative accessory dwelling units. Maybe not your stick-built accessory dwelling units.
Mm-hmm.
Looking at other materials that are cheaper, so. So this is just suggestions, we can always, um, make them more robust.
We have a question on, uh, kind of that topic. AI is like the hot button thing for everything right now.
Yeah.
Are other, uh, municipalities or jurisdictions looking at AI to help process some of these, um, requests for ADUs or building permit things? I mean, is that something that Brad could look into or somebody could look into of like, is, is that a tool at our disposal, maybe not here in Tom Water, uh, but we're making advancements every single day? And if there's something that we could utilize and make it faster and you put in the data set and it spits out, yes, this should be approved instantly or here's the different things that this is missing, could be something cool?
There goes my job.
There, there's so much else on your plate, as you're aware.
Right.
So I mean, I, we're looking into it at the museum as well. It's like, how much AI technology do we bring in to help us process our data faster? So we can be more efficient because that's what it's going to take to be, um, the dominant force moving forward. Is how do we utilize that?
And then we spend our energy and effort on the.
So much else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the outliers, not on the.
If there's just efficiency of processing, which also could reduce the cost of processing because you're having a, a person process these permits for how many hours and go through all this back and forth and rigmarole, um, that's a huge cost associated to the city.
And doesn't the city of Tom Water have some pre-approved ADU?
A handful.
Hands or what, uh, yeah.
Correct. Yeah, so with, with this new legislation, um, part of our update that is actually our development code update addressing middle housing, that's due December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, um, with our element. It's going to be, oh, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. Yes, we had to redo our inter-local agreement because the cities of Lacey, Tom Water and Olympia had pre-approved ADU plans. Um, but because of the middle housing amendments, we had to increase the minimum size.
Right.
So we have, we're going through the process now, it's going through, uh, council, I believe, um.
GZT.
Uh, yeah, okay, perfect. Yeah, we're getting there, they're almost, they're almost adopted and approved. Um, just that size change, we had to do a new inter-local agreement, so, um.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Commissioner Edwards, you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, and then going back to the whole AI discussion too. I think it's also important to think about it from the, you know, person's perspective too, right? Because not only could we make, you know, processing these applications and everything quicker, we could also make applying for them quicker, right? Clear and more streamlined and that, that would help, um, I think, out a lot too, if we could, uh, think about that side of it as well.
Yeah, I personally have not heard of other jurisdictions, um, implementing or using AI as far as processing, processing or reviewing applications and approvals.
You're saying we can be the first?
I mean, we're still, we're trying to get a new, like, online system, so I don't know.
As long as it doesn't invent something that doesn't exist.
Exactly. No, and I, I, I just like to throw these out as questions for the journals that I know Brad reads up until three AM in the morning and all the different things that he focuses on. So, um, I, I don't know if he would ever come across something like that.
He'll be here in five minutes and he may have an answer for you.
Yeah, pepper him with questions.
That's right.
Yeah, pepper, pepper him. Um, I know, like, there's probably been articles and stuff published by APA and he's been great about sharing those articles with you, but I just, I haven't.
Uh, you're good? Just questions.
Yeah.
You don't have to answer them.
In some cases, when it comes to, uh, permit review, there are some questions and discernment that can't be replaced. And so much of the time that we really need to spend actually needs to be onsite because what is put in the form isn't exactly what is happening.
Agreed.
That's a really good point.
I don't want to spend too much time talking about the format for the goals, policies and actions. Um, we have changed, uh, the format a little bit. Um, so now we have the goals and policies, but as an appendix, we have our implementation actions, um, just so that we can change those implementations to fit city needs. Um, so this goes into a little more about the draft implementation actions. It will change as new unforeseen opportunities emerge. New ones may be added, proposed ones may be modified or replaced by other actions. It just provides us more flexibility because this plan is only updated every ten years and it's planning for twenty years in the future. Um, we do not have a crystal ball and we don't know exactly what may happen. So I think this is a great approach to helping us, um, stay flexible and to keep up with current trends, uh, in the real, in real time. The format, uh, for part two, the technical, we have the introduction. Uh, we talked about the housing needs assessment, which we've kind of elaborated on. Uh, the land capacity analysis and then chapter four is the racially disparate impacts exclusion. Um, and our displacement analysis. Chapter five is going to be housing provisions and then we have our appendices. Um, this is the format for our housing needs assessment because we've already kind of touched on the, I didn't want to get too much into detail, it's quite robust. Um, but we talked about household characteristics, uh, tenure, uh, housing affordability, the inventory. We talked about emergency and supportive housing, uh, the production trends and then, uh, identifying funding and the funding needs for housing construction. We talked about our homeless population and trends and then the projected housing. Our land capacity analysis is the analysis itself. Then we talk about emergency housing and making sure we're citing, uh, emergency and supportive housing and allowing that. Then we talked about AMI, the housing types associated with it and the tenure and then other specific housing needs. And if I'm going too fast, let me know, pause me at any time. And then for racially disparate impacts, exclusion and displacement, we have our background, our historical context, communities of interest, racially disparate impacts, exclusion, uh, our displacement risk and our policy evaluation. We did just get our updated final draft of our, um, displacement analysis. So I will be reviewing that. We just got it, I believe, on Monday, which was just yesterday. Um, sorry, like, what day is it? Um, so we'll just, I'll take a look at that and then see if there's any, um, any more information or data that we can incorporate. I do think it's going to be, um, included with the housing element, just as, the, the full report is just as an appendices.
I'm wondering if this chapter can include, or maybe it'll, maybe it'll be in the context section about the kind of outreach that either staff or consultants have done in particular on this and, you know, kind of what we, what we heard.
Yeah. They did, they included a summary of their outreach and engagement. Uh, part of the displacement analysis, they had, um, four work groups. I think one was military, there was manufactured home parks, an ADU work group and then a rental, renters work group. So they met with four different kind of housing.
We maybe meet with, say, um, tribes in the vicinity or tribal interest in the vicinity about this, about housing in general, but this might be a good place to discuss that. And then any other, um, uh, components, people of color, um, that kind of thing that would make.
Yeah.
Interest to comment or give us feedback.
This is specific to the consultant's work on the racially disparate, uh, or sorry, displacement analysis.
Right.
Um, I think they did summarize and they had some demographics, um.
Yes, I'm interested in, what did they hear from the people themselves that are potentially racially discriminated?
Yeah. Yeah, um, they have a public engagement, like a breakdown of what they did, what they heard, and that is included in the full report, yeah. Um, as far as housing stakeholder engagement from the city, um, we tried our best to contact the tribes and we tried, uh, a lot of outreach to, uh, groups, associations. I think we've shared part of our public participation plan. We show, we shared our housing stakeholder list and then we got feedback. Um, I think the commit, you, the planning commission provided feedback on groups and who we should be reaching out to, uh, service providers we should be reaching out to. That was one thing that we had identified in our public participation is we don't feel like we've reached enough. Uh, you know, there's definitely, it's something we would like to work on is the outreach and hearing from our BIPOC community, um, more tribal engagement.
Engagement has been a focus.
And youth engagement, thank you, yeah, so.
Well, it's the Shalas tribe for this region and I know that they're.
Squawkin.
And squawks it up, but for.
Maybe a little more squalling.
For Tom Water specifically.
I think.
It's like right along the border of Tom Water.
Right, yeah.
Is, is technically, but they're tribal communities south.
Those are the three communities we include.
Yeah.
In connection of our management.
I guess, you know, what I'm, what I'm trying to.
Be a good question.
What I'm trying to, um, articulate is, um, and I'm, and I'm glad there, there was outreach. Fulton did that, um, trying to say, can we, can we characterize that here? About what did we hear from the people who are likely to be affected?
Oh, okay, so, okay. Yeah, so right now, we're just kind of going over how it's structured, but yeah, we like, you wanna.
This section include some kind of description about the people themselves? Otherwise, it's get, it's getting pretty filtered in a way from maybe what they themselves might say about.
They might say, choose to live on reservation because it's affordable versus trying to live in Tom Water.
Kind of a thing, right? That's where I feel comfortable, that's my one, whatever the theme is.
I, yeah, I will say staff have been waiting for that final report. They had provided us previously about a month ago, uh, with a final report and all the jurisdictions, um, had requested more information and a little bit, uh, they, we had revisions and requests and so we actually, they were gracious enough to go back and fix or address some of our concerns. So before really presenting or summarizing, I think me as a staff person wanted to make sure I had the final.
Yeah.
The final document, um, but definitely can report on it. And, you know, it might, might be in, might be in. No, so I will, I will make a note. Thank you. Okay, chapter five, we have our housing provisions, that's the protection of our housing stock. Uh, the housing provisions chapter is a state requirement and it ensures that there are adequate plans for existing and projected housing needs for all economic segments of the community that are identified. And the provisions must include identifying barriers to housing and actions and actions needed to remove those barriers. Staff have broken down the provisions into the sections identified on the screen. So we do kind of talk about, uh, some of the barriers to housing. Employment, unemployment, gaps in local funding, regulatory barrier assessment and programs and actions to achieve housing availability. This might be where we talk about, uh, other other cost of living, such as the childcare centers and, uh, location proximity to jobs. And so talking about, uh, this is going back to part one, the policy and action table. Uh, the housing element goals policies and draft implementation actions are not in a priority, priority order. Uh, each of the housing elements policies and draft implementation actions include estimated start dates, length of time to complete and target completion dates, if applicable. Um, the level of effort to achieve, the effect on the housing supply, low, medium, high, um, or specific housing needs addressed. This was kind of formatted from our housing action plan. What we did is we took a lot of our initiatives, uh, goals and policies from the housing, housing action plan, removed the ones that we have already completed, but then updated and incorporated them into this draft element. Um, so we're going to start discussing and going over the goals. As a refresher, I think it's been a while since we've talked about the goals. So goal one would be to increase the supply and variety of housing for every income and age group. Some of the highlights, uh, we wanted to address equity, coordination between the elements, talk about how land use will affect housing, um, boy, the lands for public purposes, utilities, the availability of infrastructure, transportation. Um, everything is related. And then promote more housing types for different needs. So that's where we talk about aging, like what kind of housing for age, like age-appropriate housing, life cycle housing, middle housing, are you single, are you coupled, do you have a big family? Um, that's where these kind of goals and policies would be.
Long-term care groups, yeah.
Just increase the overall supply and variety. Goal H two, uh, expand the supply of permanent income restricted affordable housing. Some highlights here, removing barriers and providing incentives to develop affordable housing. Address the need for permanent supportive housing for people with disabilities, seniors on limited incomes and others and look for ways to reduce the cost of renting or owning a home for lower incomes. Goal three, maintain and improve the existing housing stock. Uh, here we wanted to support the maintenance and improvement of the existing housing stock, our affordable housing, our older housing, making sure it's in good condition, good repair, our older rental units. Helps to reduce costs by addressing maintenance, ongoing maintenance on a regular basis and avoiding large costly repairs. How can we help the community, housing providers or individuals? How can the city help support, uh, programs, incentives for, for that? And improve energy efficiency, which reduces costs and climate impacts. And this is kind of going on, um, Commissioner Nelson's comment about resilient housing. I feel like with the resilient housing, I'm not sure if we've addressed that through our climate element uh, as far as energy efficient homes and building energy efficient buildings. Um, what we would want to consider, if we look at it from a housing perspective, is it's mostly going to be, how does that affect the housing cost? So I'm interested in what Habitat for Humanity had, um, because they're usually housing providers and affordable housing providers and help people with housing. So I'm. So I'm interested to know how they are proposing resilient housing while keeping costs down.
And how they are actually doing it. So one of the areas that they focused on to start out with is the hurricane areas. And, um, their homes are standing when the rest of the neighborhood is not. And how did they afford that? You're right, because we're, we're working with families who qualify by income.
Yeah.
For those homes and the work that they put into it. And, uh, yeah, that wasn't the opportunity to find out that information, but I think it's really would be important to be able to figure it out.
Yeah, that, that really piqued my interest when you had sent that over to me. So I'll have to follow up with Habitat. Um, but, you know, this is where we under goal three is like if we wanna make another draft implementation action down the road, um, that's something we could incorporate.
Good point.
Uh, goal four, make it easier for households to access housing and stay housed. It is more cost effective to keep someone housed than to have to find someone who is homeless or houseless and get them into housing. So avoiding that would help reduce costs, um, from our housing providers, uh, permanent supportive housing, um, our programs. Keeping people housed is very important, uh, and avoiding that displacement. Some highlights here, housing costs stay reduced when households can avoid eviction or foreclosure. Homeownership is an important way for households to build financial equity and it helps protect vulnerable populations from displacement and inflated housing costs. This is important for housing stability. Goal six, explore a permanent source of funding for low income housing. A lot of low income housing is gonna need a source of funding, um, as much as we want to help like regionally and through state allocations, it, we need to be able to find more funding for these housing, uh, types and services. So providing affordable housing to those income household and those experiencing homelessness requires public funding. How can we leverage local, state and federal dollars for low income housing? And, uh, finding ways to fund or more funding reduces the cost to develop and maintain units and make housing units more affordable. And housing is a collaborative effort within the region and it's not just a task for the individual jurisdictions. So, um, we have some questions here on the screen to help guide discussion items. If there were any, is there anything that, um, stood out? Are we, I mean, I feel like we've had great engagement, really good discussions, I really appreciate it. But are we missing anything? What I'm hearing so far is more of a story on how the data looks in Tumwater and what that means for Tumwater. Breaking that data down into a more digestible, relatable way. So I did hear that. I think that, that's important, like making sure our element explains and tells a story. Okay.
And so we really understand the, the needs of people that, you know, we're really looking out for. Kind of in that vein, I'll mention again from last meeting, a couple of weeks ago, um, just trying to think about it in the meanwhile about how can we explore the upstream causes of why we need more housing generally, more people, but especially what are the upstream causes for why we need low income, affordable housing? And that to me seems like a really important area for discussion about what do we need to do about those upstream causes to the degree that Tumwater has and any ability to do anything? But can we affect anything about those upstream causes so that we don't get to the, to more unhoused people?
Yeah.
Now, we're always just chasing, chasing the problem. How do we get back, you know, is there some policy? Is there some authority we need to request from the state? Is there, of course, there's money, but, you know, what, what are those causes? And what then can we do to address those upstream causes of why we're in a, an affordability, housing affordability situation?
Housing crisis.
It's huge, but I think we need, we owe it to ourselves to explore what some of that is. The, the housing element itself seems like that's gotta be as part of the story, the context about why, why we're here. But then, you know, that's a whole other pathway than just building stuff. You know, we gotta do some other things than just the perpetual, put a Band-Aid on it, put a Band-Aid on it, put a Band-Aid on it.
I will say from a staff person's perspective, it is complex.
Yes.
It is very complex and I don't think it's any certain point in time. I think it is the effect of things built up over time.
Absolutely.
And then we had a pandemic and then.
Yeah, but it's been building for some.
Yeah.
We had a session last time, Brad thought it was, you know, just from the eighties or whenever. I think it's a little longer, but, you know, there's been, there's, there's a significant history of policy decisions made to not invest in housing people and caring for people and.
Right.
Whole sweeping way of things. And, you know, and not just, um, you know, just, there's just a bunch of that kind of stuff that's built up over time. And I think if we don't confront it and at least speak it out loud, then it's just gonna be, you know, more, gee, I wonder why, let's just hope that somebody builds something. You know, that's, seems like we're never quite getting there.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
One of the things that make this extremely difficult is based upon current data. Half of the people that live in Tumwater don't work in Tumwater. And half of the people that work in Tumwater don't live in Tumwater. So, uh, we're, we're looking for, uh, the icing on the cake here. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be extremely difficult to get anything meaningful out of who do we want to attract to live in Tumwater? When there are so many other reasons why people decide that they're gonna live in Lacey instead of Tumwater. It isn't because the housing is any better in Lacey than somewhere. It's probably closer to where their friends are.
Better transportation access with all those lovely new interchanges.
Whole long, whole long list of reasons. So, so that, uh, we can.
Bunch of stuff.
We can in the best of all possible worlds say if everybody lived, lived in Tumwater, worked in Tumwater, then we want to see this building.
Brad's here to fix it.
Yeah.
Oh, don't ask that question. Oh, good, now make the world happy.
Now you have to see, uh, sir.
Can somebody enlighten me on what's happening or not happening?
We just had someone ask a really hard question.
Oh.
The impossible to answer question.
Yeah, Pepper, Pepper Brad.
Okay, just to, just to reinforce that I, that I am very interested in, uh, pushing that question. Kind of in the spirit of council member Dahlhoff, you know, trying to really be, um, uh, you know, pushing, pushing our boundaries a little bit. Um, I think, I think we ought to have some sort of recognition or description about that context and where we think the city can go policy wise and then eventually maybe some actions to take to, to turn that, begin to turn that. It won't, it's not gonna happen overnight. We still need all this housing, but what are we gonna do to help cut off the stream of, of all this continual building need of losing the affordability game? Okay. So, Brad, I don't know, do you, you wanna keep going or shall we?
No, yeah, it is, we're, so we're done with the presentation, we're, we're getting feedback, we're, we're talking about discussion. We had great input based on, you know, some of this. I think really what we were just talking about, um, is making sure that this element and the data tells a story and we're not just providing data.
Yep.
Um, what that looks like, translating the data into what it would be for the, the community. Um, and then we were just talking about the upstream causes, um, on why we need more housing or why we're in a housing crisis, like what led to it, what are, what are the causes? Um, and, you know, I, I had mentioned that it's, it's complex and it's not just one thing. It's just a variety of things, but, um, but yeah, that's kind of where we're at.
This is a question Brad, um, Commissioner Staff had for Brad, um, was about AI.
Oh, using AI.
Using AI to go.
To automate some processes.
Yeah, to automate processes to look at, um.
To reduce costs for, say, development permitting.
Yes, permitting and stuff like that.
Uh, that's actually a good question. Uh, it is something that we have started to talk about, um, especially in terms of, again, the permit side. I think there are things that, that make sense. Um, my concern is based on what I've seen so far of AI, it, it helps, but it's not yet.
Exactly.
And my concern is sort of going too far and having AI take the lead when, without adequately seeing what's the output is.
Erica will still have a job, essentially.
No, Eric, Eric will have a job regardless of what he is.
That's what she was concerned about, so.
Hallelujah.
Dr. Faustus contract. No, I, it is something that we are thinking about. I think the direction from the city has really been sort of to avoid going this particular route until we understand the, the impacts.
And that was my, the, the big question was, are other jurisdictions that are larger, that are funded, all sorts of stuff, are they utilizing AI? And AI is advancing so quickly and rapidly and it's not just what everybody thinks in their mind of chat GPT or whatever. There's so many great tools that it has and there's so many not great tools that you can utilize with it. Um, and from what I'm seeing in my line of work, there's a lot more every day, week, month, it's like just keeping an eye on it.
Yeah.
And trying to make efficiencies where we can so that other, um, staff time can be used in so many better ways. Yeah.
It is, it has definitely entered the management team discussions in terms of where we can use it, where it makes sense, um, to use it more. And I, I'm, and I think this has been shared by others on the management team is it, it, we wanna, we wanna see others.
Yeah.
Play with it first rather than, we don't mind not being a pioneer in this particular.
I said we can be the first ones.
Besides certain commissions. Provided that they, you know, are understanding the potential consequences if we do something that is not, results in spending far more time fixing than going ahead. Um, but unlike a couple of years ago, I think we're actually getting to the point where we're starting to think about where and how and potentially including some of that stuff.
I think that's the best question and piece.
Erica?
Yeah, I just, I thought that there was some concerns with like privacy and, uh, regulation, um, as far as using AI and, uh, because we are a jurisdiction and public servants and, um, this.
So there are tools that are coming out that are more insulated and it's not that global piece. It's like when I was at Boeing, they were coming up with their own AI that nobody else could tap into. So it was their internal stuff that it set off of and that was it. And I think that's what I've been seeing a lot more stuff going towards is how do we make it more curtailed to whatever industry group wants to use it? So it's more just of mining your own data and not going with all this other data, if that makes sense.
And, yeah, what she touched on in terms of the privacy concerns and all that, we, we have a higher level.
Yeah.
We have to ensure, um, but if we have prescribed boundaries for what it, what it could fit into and it doesn't go beyond that in terms of pulling things where it shouldn't, um, that's something I think would be explored. But in terms of, say, a work group right now, or, you know, we're not to that stage.
I think we would be.
I wonder if it's something that either Department of Commerce's growth management group or even the, um, forget their name, the South Sound Chapter of the Washington Planning Association or the American Planning Association that, you know, could, could tee up a little.
Yeah, I, what I would like to, what I haven't seen in, in terms of, I would attract various chatter, I guess, from either Commerce or from the, the National APA, American Planning Association or things like that, to see what, you know, where we're going or MSRC or any of those.
Yeah, MSRC.
We're starting to see a little bit of MSRC. Commerce has been fairly silent on this kind of thing. And I'm hoping to get to a conference or two at APA to see what the discussion is there. Cause that's where I usually pull a lot of the stuff that sort of what's coming and things. But I haven't seen that level of chatter yet, applied specifically to plan and that kind of thing. And that's where I usually start to, you start to see the things. We started to see middle housing, you know, as something being talked about in various places before.
Erica?
Also another perspective and feedback we've heard from, uh, our climate element stakeholders is concerns with using AI, uh, having the infrastructure to support, um, because it will take more energy, electricity and then just we're making sure that we have the infrastructure to support that electricity like use. And are we set up? Granted, like small scale, internal, maybe not huge, not as impactful as having a data center, but like there is a need for us to create and store more electricity moving forward. That is, that was a huge topic in our, well, not a huge topic, but that was brought up in the utility element.
Yeah, cause it's, it's that graph where it's like, okay, at what point does all this kind of intersect where fuels and everything are so efficient that you're not needing that huge data center? And, uh, how are we able to gather more energy, store more energy? So, yeah, there's gotta be an intersect. I feel a year, maybe, maybe two years where we'll be at that data, data intersect. And it's like what we were talking about with your question is how do we kind of put that on the board and say, okay, let's check back here? Like, let's keep an eye on this because we feel that this is maybe where we'll be and let's keep asking ourselves this question. And eventually we'll get to the point where it's like, holy smokes, it's here. Hey, this other community just did it and they did it so well and they unlocked it.
Oh, I want to share that, uh, I just got out of the city council meeting where we had this same discussion, uh, housing element. Uh, where we left the council, uh, was these particular questions actually. Uh, and we had a robust discussion, different directions, I think, than maybe you've gone in. But one thing that we have agreed to is to schedule another work session with the council, just to come back to the questions. Uh, in, you know, once you've had more time to sort of absorb materials or if you're ready to talk about them now, that kind of, that's perfectly fine. Uh, but from the council's perspective, they really said, let's just come back. There's, there's a lot of stuff we wanna talk about.
So does that affect the, the next steps?
It, it could. It depends on, on where your discussion has come. I, I think.
We still gonna make our December something or other deadline?
We will make it.
One way or another.
We hurry back to that conversation last year already.
We'll get a reprieve, we'll, we'll have for a reprieve. Um, just, just wondering, you know, I think we're probably in pretty good shape, but, yeah.
But that is an option.
We could also go to the, uh, report, cause we did, um, we changed the schedule to put your report at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
If we're done, if we, unless we have any more feedback.
With the, with the housing element discussion? I don't wanna cut anybody off.
No, I only have just one more comment for all of the work that you've done. I noticed that a couple of my questions, when I actually spent the time to read the document with the strategies, that that's where some of those questions got answered. And I don't know how to change that for you, but, um, it, it's, when you have the goal and then you have, um, well, I guess, so what am I talking about, the activities? The activities, that's where, that's where I saw some of, some of the things that, when I was going through everything, I, I missed that.
Are you thinking that we should re, come back and really kind of go through those implementations?
I don't think I'm proposing that. I think I'm only making an observation that. I don't think I'm proposing that. I think I'm only making an observation that that's where some of the.
You're talking about all the annotations off the stuff.
No, no, I, I'm actually looking at, let's see.
The appendix of the action items because they've been removed. And so it almost is like, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. In fact, I starred one because I'd asked about the range of housing for seniors. And I was pointing out that the senior population is growing and with that comes some different types, types of housing needs. One of which is assisted living centers. We know about that, retirement centers, all those kind of things. And I wasn't seeing it in the bigger picture. And then all of a sudden I looked down and it was here and I didn't need to have asked the question if I had read all the way through all of the activities.
Yeah. One of the things we struggled with, with the climate element and the housing element is when we had everything in one table, um, in, in terms of putting the implementation actions in with the goals and policies, it became a little bit overwhelming. And the thought process was, we pulled out the goals and policies specifically because they're really intended to be used by everybody for the next 20 years. They are the foundation for any implementation action, whether they're the draft ones that are proposed in the back or changes to those or additional things that we don't know about. Um, and that's why we kind of pulled them apart.
Yeah, I think so.
We struggled with that because we, our original intent was, we wanna show goals and policies. We wanna show how we're. The further discussion we had and we, we landed on it. And I think the council was actually pretty supportive of this, of keeping those things apart. And they were really excited about the inner work. Using that time to pull in all those things that we've included in the draft implementation actions to talk about, okay, this is how we're actually gonna do it, how we're gonna prioritize it, now the resources needed and all of those things. So it was sort of, they're already gone beyond what the policies and stuff are saying and saying, this is how we wanna do it and go beyond what the comp plan has.
Good to know. Any other remarks on the housing element? Great. A bit of a glare, no hands. Okay.
Um, well, just any updates? It's your, it's your usual.
Yeah, your, we.
Report.
Oh.
We skipped that, yeah.
Talk about yourself.
We're now going back.
Bringing snacks, I intend.
The director's report.
If you're going to bring something to share it. So if I need to offset that, I'll be bringing a cake in at later date. Let me know.
Oh.
Okay, I will bring in. Heeding, I'll bring in snacks.
All right.
Uh, in terms of, of manager, director, whatever I am now, uh, report, um, I, I think I wanna share a little bit about, uh, where the council is in terms of their strategic planning. Uh, the council, uh, every year, uh, updates their strategic plan. And the strategic plan is a much, much shorter document than the comp plan. It really is intended to sort of hide where they're gonna put their effort in the next year in terms of going beyond just how we deal with new develop, you know, and all those other things that are beyond the comp plan. The effort this year to update the strategic plan is actually to try to bring it more in line with how we, uh, have structured our, um, comprehensive plan and our work programs. So they really become much more of a, the, the current structure for the strategic plan is a list of about six or so big goals, support housing, that kind of thing. And then a long bulleted list of everything that we think is a good idea that we wanna do under that. And that could be everything from big, big ticket items like redo our, our zoning code to accommodate this to a very, a very small thing, like we support this particular program for this particular person, this particular instance, kind of thing. So it, we wanna pull it out and to make it a little bit more of a document that they can use on a year-to-year basis to sort of track progress, to monitor, here's how we actually accomplished what we said we wanted to do. Here's the next steps, building on that and do that in a more structured way. And so the, the council is going to be meeting, uh, Saturdays, uh, two more times. We met last weekend in here. Um, you didn't see graffiti or anything from the meeting. There was some of that. Um, and the focus really was sort of, um, all the departments got together and, uh, had put together a list of everything that we do. Uh, because in some cases, you know, there's some very obvious public things that we do. You know, the, the street repair, for example, is a pretty public and obvious thing we do. But there's also other things that may not be visible to the council. Um, and so our intent was, uh, to give these things, these lists upfront to the council to sort of, from our particular case, we talked about all of the requirements we have or mixture of requirements or things that the council says we want to do that isn't a requirement. But that, that's important to Tumwater. Uh, for, for land use, long range planning, so that's everything that we have to do for the comp plan update requirement. Food system plan, Tumwater wants to do on its own, kind of thing. So we included everything. Uh, on the permitting side, we listed every permit. We talked about everything, all the reporting we have to do, all those kinds of things. Uh, again, the, the, the key question that was asked was twofold. Was there anything on the list that shouldn't be? And second of all, is there anything that isn't on the list that should be on these lists? The consistent thing that I heard back from the folks that I, from, we talked, we had each of the council members talk to each of us for about 20 minutes, um, was that they were looking for staff to provide guidance on what is important and what's not. Help them guide their decisions on how to balance all those things across the table. So the, the first takeaway was, we're doing our job. You know, they're not saying, we're not, we're not covering something or we're doing something they don't like. So first takeaway. Second takeaway is, oh, boy. Because with the ability, you know, to be, be seen as the person helping recommend things, that implies that you are now the expert, which obviously we're paid to be. But it's, it's another thing to say, you know, the, the council really looks to us to support them. Um, and that's a big responsibility, obviously. You do the same for ours and, and so forth. Um, from those discussions, uh, we're now going to, I think, move into actually the development of the strategic plan based on that kind of, okay, we've talked about these things. Here's the things we're gonna do. Let's start talking about various structures. That would be good. And then, so the next meeting, which will be the last Saturday of this month, will be that. And then the council will have a couple of months until September to really sort of think through all these things and put it together in a final plan to get adopted this, um, this fall. Um, so that, that's a big, that's a big thing. A couple other quick highlights. Uh, we're getting closer on the habitat conservation plan. Uh, our consultant has, there are a couple of issues, uh, dealing with port property and the species that are on the port property. Uh, just, there's a lot of other things, the structure beyond just the gopher that we're dealing with, uh, that, that we're getting close. Um, so we're hoping to have a draft from them shortly so we can get our review done internally and then we can start thinking about getting that public draft out. Uh, because that's gonna be a big deal, getting closer. Maybe a year ago. Um, have I left on anything else important?
Um, just talking about our meetings and moving forward, a nice gentle reminder. Moving forward with our meeting schedule, because it is summer and there's probably planned vacations and.
Thank you. I apologize. There was a, a reminder, uh, for the planning commission that please let us know in advance, well in advance. If you don't, number one, you're not gonna be available for a meeting. Um, if you're sick or so forth, we understand. That's a different issue. Uh, but our purpose is we wanna make sure for those who can attend and so forth, that we have a quorum.
Or that we can provide enough notice that we don't have to travel here and then cancel a meeting after.
Yeah, that, that's the biggest concern. We don't want people to waste their summer evenings. We, we want you here at a late hour, eating snacks that you brought. Thank you very much. Um, but again, if we don't, if we can't meet.
It just also helps with our update timeline for us, for our public noticing requirements and for adopting the comprehensive plan.
I am noticing on our, um, meeting schedule, um, that August, uh, there's two meetings in August. There presently no descriptions about those. Are we anticipating that those would be canceled meeting?
Potentially. Uh, the council takes the first half of August off. So if we don't necessarily have something that we need to talk about, we will look to. I'll be here. But, you know, if you guys don't wanna be here, that's, used to that kind of thing.
Okay. Or we can use it for spillover if we need it. Okay.
Oh, one very quick thing I wanna share. Um, we've had some very good comments, uh, from various stakeholders. Stakeholder group that's helping in addition to the commission and the council provide comments on this. Um, one thing that we had last week was for the section, we had a legislative update and a good, good discussion, uh, across the board on that. And we've had discussions and comments about how sometimes this particular update feels like a road exercise and checking the boxes for the state checklist. Um, not necessarily gonna come back with information saying that others are finding that different. But I had a conversation with a planning commissioner from Lacey who raised the same exact concerns about, that we have discussed about, how do we make sure that we have all these things we have to do? How do we ultimately end up with a plan that is a Tumwater plan and not just a plan that reflects the state guidelines? So as we're kind of going through this process, as we seem to be focusing on a lot of the things that are required of us, if there are things that we need, urban agriculture, et cetera, that are important to Tumwater or important to what you think Tumwater should continue to be or become, please let us know, cause we wanna make sure those things are important.
Um, kind of to that end, I'm wondering, um, uh, the council's strategic plan, Tumwater's strategic plan. I, I guess I, I'm not expecting that it would send us in two very different of a direction of where we are going, right?
Yeah.
But it should help.
It will reinforce, and more importantly, it will reinforce the work that we've been doing here. Um, and that, by building that stronger connection between what we say we are gonna do on the comp plan and what we do on the strategic plan, that's the first step. And I think that's, the council's recognized that and something.
Oh, I will say the public comment period for the housing element, we did send it out for public review. Um, we asked all comments are received by July 11th. So if there's follow-up comments, um, any questions you have?
So, did you mention who it went to? Who we let know? Okay. We have a long, almost 900 people list of people who've indicated that they have interest in finding out what we're. We sent it out, that notice to the whole list, uh, letting know it was, the first of all, the housing element would be available and then we'd be letting them know as we get other things out. So it's not just the stakeholders that we've been talking to, which is still a big, big group. But it's also those who've responded to the surveys and other things that we're letting.
You're telling people what is already available online as they were ambitious enough to go look for it.
Yep. Or more importantly, reach out to us if they have questions or help, need help in figuring out what they're looking at, so.
Or they could see the schedule for our public meetings.
Exactly.
There's a public meeting and.
Any other, any other things to raise? Any other discussion?
That I've, I've, I've figured out when I'm gonna retire.
You did? Twenty fifty, twenty one thirty.
It was gonna be.
After going through the list of things that you do?
After going through all the meetings, I, I sort of didn't realize that much.
Are you feeling underappreciated?
You signed the same document that Erica signed.
Yeah. Life long commitment.
Life long commitment.
All right. We appreciate you.
Yeah.
We really do.
Yeah. At the end of the day. Well, I, uh, Mike did a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of meetings.
He did.
He's still our boss right now, too.
And you're saying that because we're.
Immediate supervisor.
You see, you seem really disappointed. We, we are actively looking for a new boss.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
That's what I'm looking for. Are you making it?
I'm making it.
Oh, okay. It sounded more like a question.
More like a question, motion to adjourn.
All right, our vice chair has, has, um, moved to adjourn the meeting to secure a second. A second. That's Commissioner Nelson.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to adjun, adjourn our meeting tonight. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Good job.
Bye, Grace.
Why do we leave just a?